Okay, I'll call together the, call to order the special meeting of the Bolling Board of Commissioners for May 5th, 2020. And call the role here. Commissioner Perigent.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Denning.
Here.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
And Bruce Wilkerson is here. First item is municipal order 2020, number 68, municipal order approving the probationary appointments of Sam Harmon and Trevor Kirby to the position of Parks Facility Maintainer in the Parks and Recreation Department. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigent. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, we got to turn it over to Jeff to tell us about it first, I apologize.
Well, these are two vacancies that we've had. One would be at Curriacaus Park, the other at Lovers Lane. We're going to use these people as kind of monitors going forward when we open up the parks as well, at the same time they're doing their duties. Seventeen applicants, five and selected Mr., give me a second here, Mr. Trevor Kirby, who went to school, Barron County High School, attended WKU, has worked part-time for our Parks Department at Preston Miller over the years. And also Mr. Sam Harmon, graduated from Warren East High School, and has a bachelor's degree in sports management from WKU. He also works for us part-time as a fitness instructor, so pretty experienced with these two guys. Recommend their approval.
Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the role, Commissioner Perigent.
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Denning.
Yes.
Commissioner Nash.
Yes.
And Wilkerson, yes, motion passes unanimously. I overlooked, I'm getting some feedback, is there, can you hear it actually, just one way.
I'm asking the mayor, we didn't approve the minutes, did we?
Yeah, I'm going back to that in just a second. Okay. I need a motion for approval of the minutes from May 5th, 2020. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigent. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Commissioner Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Joe. Now we'll go to municipal order 2020, number 69. Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Leah Glasscock to the position of Financial Specialist in the Finance Department. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigent. Mr. Mazzol.
As you know, retirement's sometimes called domino effect. This one is due to the retirement of Esther Mullins. I'd like to take, thank Esther for all of her years of service to the city. She had over 30 years, I believe, with the city in finance. We had Megan Banmeter up in Treasury Division. She chose to accept a lateral transfer to the back, to Esther's position in accounts payable, payroll, and accounting. And so that left a vacancy at the front counter in Treasury Division. And that's what we went out for with this, and we got 26 applications, selected five candidates for interviews. We had a panel of Sean, Aaron, Baloo, and Tiger to review and interview these applications. We are recommending the appointment of Leah Glasscock. Leah is a graduate of Warren East High School, and has an associate's degree from South Central Kentucky Community and Technical College, and comes to us as a teller, which I think is appropriate for that position, from a local bank. So recommending Leah Glasscock for the financial specialist position in finance to fill that vacancy.
Any comments or questions? I'll call the role. Perigent. I lost Sue.
Yes.
There you go, thank you.
Sorry.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson, yes, motion approves unanimously. Municipal order 2020, number 70. Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Lizette Garcia to the position of Office Associate in the Public Works Department. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigent. Mr. Mazzol.
This is the filling of the vacancy created when Courtney was promoted, Courtney Howe was promoted to Environmental Inspector. We need this position to be able to answer anyone that walks in the door. And we went out for advertising internally and externally, and we got 125 applications. We gave them online computer skills assessments that includes typing, program reading, all that, and chose six candidates for interviews. Those were conducted by Greg, David Hayner, Laura Brown, Courtney, and Tiger. And of those, we are recommending Lizette Garcia. Lizette is a graduate of Warren Central High School, and has a bachelor's degree from WKU. She's worked as substitute teacher for the last five years, and an office manager for Geo Center, and also has an in-home, is an in-home specialist for family enrichment centers. So recommending Lizette for the position of Office Associate in Public Works Admin.
Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the role. Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson, yes, motion passes unanimously. Municipal order 2020, number 71. Municipal order approving the appointment of Terry Daniels to the Bowling Green Municipal Utilities Board. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigent. Dr. Daniels owns a company called Focal Point Coaching and Training, has his PhD in organizational and industrial psychology, along with a master's from that as well, his bachelor's is in business administration from Western. You may know Terry from being a contract human resource specialist at The Chamber, and talked to him for quite a while on a little trip that we took, and happy to recommend him. Are there any comments or questions? He'll be taking the place of Steve Snodgrass, who's, will be termed out, he served his two terms. We appreciate all that Steve has done in his eight years on the BGNU board. Any questions? I'll call the role. Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes, motion passes unanimously. The next four are reappointments to the boards that they've been serving on. We appreciate their service at this point. The first one is municipal order 2020, number 72. Municipal order approving the reappointment of Greg Cottle to the Bowling Green Historic Preservation Board. Motion by Wilkerson, and second by Perigent. Are there any comments or questions? Thank Mr. Cottle for agreeing to participate. Again, he just served part of the term for somebody that left town, and now will have a full term. I'll call the role. Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson, yes, motion passes unanimously. Next one is a reappointment for municipal order 2020, 73. Municipal order approving reappointment of Elaine Price to the City County Board of Adjustments. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigent. Again, this is, will be, I think Elaine's third term on the Board of Adjustments. Any comments or questions? I'll call the role. Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson, yes, motion passes unanimously. Municipal order 2020, number 74. Municipal order approving the reappointment of Stephen Skinner to the Housing Authority of Bowling Green. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigent. This will be Mr. Skinner's second term, second four-year term. Any comments or questions? I'll call the role. Perigent. Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson, yes, motion passes unanimously. Municipal order 2020, number 75. Municipal order approving reappointment of Dr. Randy Dear to the Bowling Green, City of Bowling Green Code Enforcement and Nuisance Board. Motion by Wilkerson, and second by Perigent. I believe this will be Dr. Dear's third term on the Code Enforcement Board. I think they're three-year terms, aren't they, Ashley? I don't recall if it's three or four. Any comments or questions? I'll call the role. Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson, yes, motion passes unanimously. Next item is municipal order 2020, number 76. Municipal order approving, or excuse me, authorizing and accepting bid number 2020-53 for a mobile ventilation prop for the fire department from Fire Vent LLC of Carson City, Nevada, in the amount of $71,610. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigent. Mr. Mazzol.
Our department went out for a grant and received that from the Kentucky Fire Commission Training Ability Grant Program in the amount of $67,000. They went out for that to get a training apparatus that ensures safety of firefighters and occupants to train on the ventilation tactics. And this, there's a picture of this apparatus in your packets. Basically, it's on a trailer, but it's basically where they train to vent routes safely and be able to get smoke and vapors out of a burning building when it's a structure fire. Nick Cook assisted with this grant. We were awarded $67,000. We only got one bid from Fire Vent LLC, Carson City, Nevada, for $71,610. So we had enough in budget, $4,061,000, to cover the difference in the fire department. So we're recommending the approval of purchase on this one, and I'll try to answer any questions you might have on this.
Any comments or questions?
If you'll recall, a lot of, we get, we get a lot of old, we try to get to a lot of old houses or buildings that are going to be demolished. I don't know if you remember the veterinary clinic out on, where the new chicken place went. We tore a lot of holes in that roof for training, and tried to take advantage of those type of structures when we can. But this will provide us another option for training on ventilation. They, I think they train over 500 hours a year, firemen on ventilation of structures to have to get, get the smoke and the heat down. So, what this is for.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions? I'll call the role. Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
And Wilkerson, yes, motion passes unanimously. Next item is municipal order 2020, 77. Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid 2020-33 for census block groups 103.3 and 103.4, new housing opportunities from Live the Dream Development Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $480,000, and Hotel Inc. of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $260,000. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigent. Mr. Mazzol.
So as you recall, after we did the housing needs assessment, market analysis, we went out with an RFP for new affordable housing opportunities to use the available CDBG money we set aside for census blocks 103.3 and 103.4. We had set aside available funding of $740,000. We got two bids, one from Live the Dream and one from Hotel Inc. We evaluated those proposals, I said bids, they're proposals. Live the Dream was to do 15 houses total for $600,000. Hotel Inc. originally proposed to do four houses for $480,000. Due to our budgets, our team that Brent served on, and his staff reviewed these, and we are proposing to do a $480,000 award to Live the Dream to build or rehab 12 houses, seven affordable rental units, five affordable homeownership units. And then we are recommending to give Hotel Inc. $260,000 to rehab two houses for the transitional housing, and that would get us back to the $740,000 allotment that we have to play with. Brent happens to be on this call. We can try to answer any questions you might have, but $480,000 to Live the Dream, $260,000 to Hotel Inc. for affordable housing, transitional housing needs.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions, Sue?
Yeah, Brent, on the transitional housing, are those single families, or are they going to be more than one family transitioning at a time?
So they would be more than likely single-family structures, just because of the amount of, the type of houses in 103.3 and 103.4. But they would not plan to mix families in the sense of a family unit. But what you could see is two adult individual males in a single unit, or two adult individual females, or a family in one of those units. So it's a, it's a little bit flexible, just depending on who they have coming into the program at the time when a unit is available.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, one question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Brent, did both entities bid on the total package, and you broke it down based on points? In other words, did Hotel Inc. bid on the same packet that Live the Dream Development did?
Make sure I'm not muted. Okay. So to answer your question, we developed an RFP, a request for proposals, that outlined all the things that we were looking for, all the rules and regulations required by the CDBG program. And then each of those individual organizations reviewed that and submitted a proposal based on what we wrote in the RFP. So they submitted individually, but they both bid on or proposed on the same package. Under the package, there's a lot of flexibility on how they wanted to put their program together, their project together. This, they elected to do the types of programs or projects that they're doing as part of their proposal, but they both reviewed the same RFP that we issued at the city.
Okay.
Any other comments? I'll call the role. Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson, yes, motion passes unanimously. Municipal order 2020, 78. Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid 2020-54 for the Transit Management and Operational Services, with the management services from RATP Development USA of Fort Worth, Texas, for a monthly amount of $17,905.35, and the operational services from Community Action of Southern Kentucky of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $73.50 per revenue hour. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigent. Mr. Mazzol.
This is one that Brent Childers has put many, many hours into, and so I'm going to him to kind of give you an overview and a summary of where we are at, and what we're proposing to do with our transit operations and our transit management side. Brent?
Thank you, Jeff. Last June, we presented, following the Michael Baker study, some options on how transit could be provided, or the structure under which transit could be provided. At that June 2019 meeting, we were given direction to move forward with a management operator-type model, where the city would procure a manager and procure an operator to run the service. So over the last year, we've been working towards that goal of having that directive seen by the July 1st, our date of this year. So we went out and did another RFP. We used Rockland Consulting, firm out of Pennsylvania, to assist us with that. And we developed a request for proposals, put that out, and received five proposals from three different firms. So you could, firms could bid on operations only, management only, or both. So that's why we had three firms with five different proposals. So those were all individually reviewed. We set up interviews with each of the firms for all the services that they were bidding on, scored those, did best and final offers, moved through that process in the last several weeks. And finally, we're here to recommend RATP Dev as manager, and Community Action of Southern Kentucky as operator. There's quite a bit of changes of how we've traditionally done transit. So let me break this down just a little bit, so that you understand kind of the new structure moving forward. So the manager will serve as an agent of the city. We feel like we needed that professional expertise to assist us in managing transit services here in Bowling Green. And what I mean by managing is really running the program, that higher level view. So they'll be picking, making decisions and recommendations based on what times, frequencies, routes, things like that. They'll be picking, you know, what type of, what types of buses should we be running based on our ridership and our locations. They'll be managing the grant, handling the reporting, handling the triennial review. They'll be doing a lot of the big-picture management functions. We didn't feel like that we could hire this individual on staff, because we didn't have the expertise here locally, nor did we have the expertise to provide the training to the individual if we did hire them. So we went out, and we selected RATP Dev USA. They're a large multinational company that does transit services all across the globe. They're a leader in this field, and have several contracts across the US, including the WKU management contract here for copper transit. They will be providing a full-time manager that will be moving and relocating to Bowling Green to serve in this position, and they will be our manager. So they will take some of the, some of the responsibilities from Nick and I, some of the responsibilities that we currently have under Community Action, will really be an agent of the city. The city still retains the decision-making authority, the final say, but they're the ones that will come to us with recommendations on how to improve things, how to make things better, how to increase ridership, opportunities that maybe we didn't, Nick and I didn't have enough knowledge to know to see. So we've met the manager that they're proposing as part of this contract, spent a lot of, a lot of Zoom-type meetings with that individual, having conversations, getting to know them, we're excited about that. On the other side of this is a operations contract. So the operations contract will be for Community Action of Southern Kentucky, who's been the transit provider here in Bowling Green since its inception in 1993. The operations is really running the day-to-day part of transit. So all the bus drivers will be employees of the operations contractor. They'll be the ones making sure that the buses show up on time, run the routes, that they're maintained, that the vehicles maintain, that the shelters are cleaned, that all those day-to-day type functions is what the operations contract does. That's set up on a different structure than what we've had before financially. Previously, it was a cost reimbursement model. Now it's a vehicle revenue service hour model. So they are paid a unit cost of $73.50 per vehicle revenue hour. And so if they provided, I'd say 100 hours of vehicle revenue hour service in that month, and they were paid 100 times 73, 50, and that's how their cost is developed. So it gives us more flexibility in how we deliver transit services, because it's based on a unit cost, as opposed to the traditional way of this cost reimbursement model. That's a very brief overview of a year's worth of transit planning and investigation and work to get to this point. There's still a lot of work to be done. This just kind of lays the foundation for us moving forward, for providing quality transit services to the citizens of Bowling Green. And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
I think Denning had his hand up first. Joe, if you want to go.
Slam, man, he is up first. Mayor.
Go ahead, Slam.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Joe. A couple of questions, Brent. Does, is the person that is being hired, the same person, and the person that's moving to Bowling Green, the same person who is managing for Western?
No. Western has a contract with RATP Dev, and they have a full-time manager that they have had for, I don't know how long. We will have a contract with RATP Dev, and we will have our own manager. That individual is not the current manager at WKU, it will be a manager who's actually moving out of Colorado to Bowling Green as part of this contract.
Do you believe, is the person who's kind of overseeing all of that, that they will be able to collaborate and potentially explore ways that the two systems could more actively work together to move more people and cover more ground?
Yes, sir. And since that both of those managers work for the same company, I think that allows that collaboration and communication to exchange even easier. Now, obviously, Western is still going to be focused on its system, the city's still going to be focused on its system, but as far as collaboration and working through those things, I think that's, that could not be any easier, because they both work for the same company. And that was also part of the management responsibilities listed in the RFP. So we expressly listed that as one of the things that the city wanted as part of this proposal.
Do, thank you. Do you believe that, I was very happy to hear that somebody was going to be living local, because I think trying to manage where the routes go and the times that they run from out of town would be difficult at best. But will there be a discussion or an emphasis placed upon expanding routes and expanding the times with which they run? The, the two complaints that I get about transit, fair or not, I'm not, I'm just, you know, are that they don't go where we, where I need them to, and they don't run as late as I need them to run. So will there be a, will, who will make those decisions? How will they make those decisions? Will they base those decisions on, on data? And if so, do you know where that data will come from?
So one of the things we talked about in our interviews, and what the manager talked about, was what we call route optimization. How do you get the best out of each route? How do you expand growth upon, upon transit as it goes out into the community? And so, yes, this person will be responsible for that. They'll make the recommendations. It's up to the city to say yea or nay on those final decisions. But they're there as an agent of the city to say, you know, these are things that I think you could do to increase ridership. One of the plans, early plans that, as we talked with the manager, was to ride the routes. Just see how they go, see how they function, see how they lay out, see what people are, you know, really see it. Because you're right, it's hard to know the day, to know what's going on when you're four states away, to really be a part of the transit system and see how, how do we best do this? And some of those might be simple as, we should turn left here instead of turning right. And some of those be, might mean, you know what, this route isn't providing the optimal value to the system that it should be. We need to reconfigure this route, or do away with this route altogether, and put those resources back into another route. I don't know what all those recommendations will be, but the manager, that is part of their task, or part of their responsibility, is to provide us with that information, provide us with, these are things that I would do to get the best value out of it. And with the revenue hour unit cost model, it gives us more flexibility to apply that across different routes, or different changes, or things that we might do down the road. Right now, we're not planning on changing anything. With all this goes forward, we're going to continue on we are, but that is part of the manager's responsibilities, is to do that evaluation, and say, okay, here are options that I see right out of the gate, that cost no money, that we could implement very quickly. And then we, as staff, will review those, have a conversation before we bring them forward for final decision-making authority. But they're there to make recommendations, we're here to say yes or no. Because when it's all said and done, this is the city of Bowling Green's transit system, we're the responsible entity with the federal government as it relates to this transit system.
And who is that person that will say yes or no?
Well, it depends on what that decision is. And so we're getting a little bit more into the details. I think that there will be some things that I would have managed. I think that there will be some things that I would have management authority to say yes or no to. There would be some things, just like how we do business now. If you think about a procurement that we have, there are certain things I can say yes by that. There are certain things it takes Jeff to say yes by that. Then there are certain things it takes you five to say yes by that. So I can see that same type of hierarchy, using that as a model for, what is the value of this decision? What is the impact of this decision? And so I can see some type of model like that. And so we haven't got all those things worked out. We don't have all those details worked out. But those are the things that will be going on over the next four to six weeks as we get closer to that July 1st start date.
One final question, if I may. Do you believe that the unit cost, the framework will increase ridership by increasing investment into providing the best possible product?
I don't know that I could say that there's a direct correlation between how we pay for a service and how that service is received in the community. I, I think that would be difficult to say yes, that there's a direct correlation there. I would say this, how we pay for this service gives us flexibility so that we can deliver services. We can change services if we need to. We're not as locked in. It gives us the flexibility to adapt to the changing needs in the marketplace or the changing needs in ridership, which then gives us a better ability to provide better services to the, to the consumer. If that makes any sense whatsoever, I hope it does.
It, it does. It does. I, I yield the virtual four.
Joe, did you have a question?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Nash. Thank you, Mayor. I guess I want to go along the same, the individual, Brent, that is coming here from Who will he answer directly to on a day-to-day basis?
So he will not be an employee of the city. So he will have a boss under the corporate leadership of RATP Dev. I think it's one of their kind of senior management level individuals. That would be his actual superior. But they work for the city. So they're, and it specifies in the RFP of what we call the City of Bowling Green Contract Manager, which would be Nick and I, as the representatives that you all have said, we want you all to oversee transit here in this community. So locally, it would be here. I would not be their boss though because they are a contractor. So I want you to understand the relationship difference there. I would not supervise this individual. Nick would not supervise this individual. Their supervision would be by their corporate structure. But we would be their contact as it relates to the services that they're providing here on behalf of the City of Bowling Green.
So the operation person is a community action person?
Operations would be a community actions employee. That would be under this other side of the con, the other contract, under the operations contract. That would be a community action employee. That individual would be supervised by the staff at Community Action. I believe that they report directly to Dr. Butler as, as interim executive director, CEO. So that, I would not supervise the operations person either, but they would still report back to the city and to the transit manager as part of this relationship.
So the person moving in from Colorado, he will technically not have anyone under him here in Bowling Green?
That is correct.
Well, I guess I'm a little confused. If nobody has anybody to answer to and everybody is somewhere else.
He still has to.
Go ahead.
No, I didn't want to interrupt you. I apologize, Commissioner Danny. I wanted to let you finish your thought. My apologies.
Now, I'm, maybe I'm making things worse than what, what they are. The gentleman from Colorado is going to come in here and work for us under his contract, and his contract says that he will answer with his boss, answer to his boss back in Texas. The operation person here in Bowling Green, and his work, he will answer to his present boss, whatever the case may be, at Community Action. Are we developing a fight between the Colorado person and the Bowling Green person?
I, I don't believe so. Okay. So we've had a lot of conversations with the management company and the operations company. And the focus of those conversations has always been about a common goal, about providing the common goal, which is the best service to the citizens of Bowling Green at a price that we're willing to pay for. So I understand your concerns about that person being an individual, but any contractual relationship we have with any of the firms, either providing professional service or even construction service, they have a contractual relationship with the city. Doesn't mean that they're an employee or supervised by the city. So if we hire a construction company to come in and build a sidewalk, we don't supervise the foreman on that job site. They have somebody that they answer to, but that company, that organization, has a contractual relationship and obligation to the city to provide the service as laid out in the application. So whenever we went through the RFP process, we spent a lot of time laying out, these are the responsibilities of each of these. There's even a matrix on the first page, once you get past all the, the procurement stuff, lays out where all the responsibilities are for the city, because the city has a responsibility in this game. We cannot obfuscate all of our responsibility for transit to management and operations. The city still has a responsibility here. And, but it's built on that structure of, we're in this together, we're here to do this together, we're here to build this together. And we think we can achieve that. We think that we have achieved that. And we also believe that this is a company, that this is their business. Their business is to send transit managers all across the world, providing transit management services, and they also do operations. We just did not select them for operations as part of this contract. And really, right now, the transit system has been managed by an operations director for the last several years. That is not an employee of the city, that is not supervised by the city, but there's still a contractual relationship. So I still call over there and say, hey, this is what we need done. These are things that we need to do. And we go back and forth. We, we communicate regularly to, to achieve things. And we've moved a lot of things in the last couple of years through those conversations. And neither one of those is an employee, employer, supervisor, employee relationship. It's just a contractual relationship and having a common goal about providing the best quality service. And that's where we've tried to focus our conversation as we move in this direction, because this is new territory. We understand this is new territory. There's going to be a learning curve for us, there's going to be a learning curve for you, there's going to be a learning curve for Community Action. It's going to be a learning curve for RATP Dev. Yes, they've done this. They're bringing in somebody that has a lot of experience, but he's never walked, he hasn't been in here in this situation with the players that we have and the, and the intricacies that we have here in Bowling Green to try to navigate. But we'll all get through it, as long as we have the common goal, and that's what we've tried to establish the, the conversation around.
Good deal.
Jeff, I think you had a question or a comment.
Yeah. Brent, can you kind of clarify that most likely you would have RATP Dev come and give an annual report, status update as to how they are performing? And then we would, we would have, there's, I'm, I'm sure there's something in the contract where we have a 60 or 90-day clause. If we don't like their performance, we can get out. Is that correct?
That is correct. There is reporting requirements in there. There's different levels of reports based on frequency and the size of the reports. But there'll also be the individual, whenever we're buying buses, coming forward and saying, these are the buses I think we should buy as part of this transit system. So they will be the individual, they will be responsible for making those recommendations to you all, reporting back to you all, and answering those questions to say, you know, well, why can't we do this? Or why can't we do that? Or, you know, some of those types of things. They will be the individual. Now, Nick and I will be their main point of contact because we oversee the grant portion of it, but they will be coming before you all, whenever we're actually back in City Hall and back in the commission chambers, like, like the good old days, and providing those types of reports and information. So you have better understanding of how transit's running here in Bowling Green.
So, did you have a question?
I do, thanks. Is, is there any way for the first year or, or two that we could have that update maybe every six months instead of every year? Just to kind of be able to tell the citizens maybe a, a story that's, that of improvement?
Yeah, and, and, you know, as we get into those, some of those items, we might realize that we might need a little bit more frequency and a little bit more decision-making.
I apologize. I'm home. I'm home. She can't drive, so she can't leave. I had one other question. With, say, we're paying 73 and some change per hour, per, per unit running. With the current amount that we're paying, does that allow for us to increase the number of hours and keep the same cost? Or is that a, how does, how, did you do that math?
Yeah, this is an overall increase in our total cost of providing transit services. But we feel like we were able to balance that and, and have some additional funding moving forward, that this was the right direction we needed to go in. So it wasn't always about what is the cheapest cost, it was what is the right cost for our system? And what is the right cost for us moving forward to make some of these changes, to move in some different directions, to create new ideas and new ways of delivering service? So it's not as much about, can we now expand hours because we're saving money based on this? As much as is, we can move hours around as part of that, so then we can deliver services where people need services at the right time.
Well, I think you're absolutely on it. And, you know, more efficient and better services is going to result in more services, and I can't thank you enough for the time that you spent on this. One of the things I think our community is, is, is in such dire need of is enhancing our transportation program. And so, kudos, hats off to you. That's one of the reasons, I think, if, if we can get a more frequent, you know, update on, on successes and direction and how, how well we're doing, then I think it's going to be accepted as a very wise investment. So thanks, Brent.
Thank you.
And Nick. Whoops. She got stepped on by her dad. Sorry.
Are there any comments or questions?
All my questions were answered by previous commissioners, and I just want to echo Commissioner Perigene and just say thank you for all the hard work on moving forward in this, our transit system and the research I did on the company. I am super excited about their capacity and their track record for innovating local transit systems. Really excited about the potential for that new partnership and moving us forward and innovating our public transportation system. And I'm also really excited that we get to enter into this new partnership and with new ideas and this new partnership, but also that we get to retain our relationship with Community Action, because I loved reading all of the comments from the writers and how much they love our bus drivers from Community Action and how they were just like, whatever you do, keep our bus driver, we love them, they are the best, and give them a raise, they are amazing. So I'm excited that we're able to do both of these things. So thank you all for all your hard work.
All right. I'll call the roll. Perigene?
Sorry about that, guys. Yes.
Basely Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson, yes. Motion approved unanimously. Next writing is, read, next item, it is first ordinance, first reading of ordinance BG 2020 number seven. Ordinance granting franchise-related telecommunication system. Ordinance granting a non-exclusive telecommunications or related non-cable franchise to Comcast of Indiana, Kentucky, Utah LLC, DVA Comcast Cable, Heartland Region, for the use of rights of way for the operation and maintenance of a telecommunications or non, or related non-cable system within the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky. And by Wilkerson's second, Perigene. Jeff, are you taking this?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand off to Gene. Gene has been working with Comcast on this franchise, and I'll let him give you a brief overview and, and, and purpose of this.
If everybody remembers, back in 2019, the Board of Commissioners approved a telecommunications franchise. At that time, we were contacted by NCTC with some interest in providing service for Plano area, Plano Road area. We did that one, we advertised it, they were the only responding to it at that time. Since then, we had a second one. Do you remember Windstream came in, expressed interest, we advertised again the second time. They were the only responding, and we awarded one to them. In the last two or three months, probably a little bit longer than that, took a little while to get them together, but Comcast contacted me again, expressing some interest in it. We are going to be more of a connector city, I think, with them than anything else. They are providing services to two other locations, but they need to run some of their lines through Bowling Green to connect those two locations. It's, again, it's just because in our rights of way, we have to advertise and grant them a franchise to do that. My understanding, oh, they are not going to be providing services here. I did talk to them a little bit and said, we'd probably love to have a competition in cable and in telecommunications, which means internet, phone, where else they want to do. But right now, I don't think they have any plans on providing services here. They're just running our, their system through the city, I think mostly on poles. We had pole attachments agreements with whoever owns those. But again, because we're using our rights of way, we have to grant the franchise to them. We will not be getting any fees from them since we're still getting fees from the state through the state telecommunications tax that they have in place. We do have the right sometime in the future if we want to change that, but right now, there's not any interest in, in doing that. So their fees, they pay to the state, we'll go there and then we, but we did put a language in this agreement, if we ever change our mind and want to assert a local one, that we have the ability to do that. This is a 10-year term. I would expect in 10 years, we'll come back and renew it for another 10. Motion to do is 20. Because these things change so quickly, I was not real keen by doing 20-year agreements because, again, technology changes nothing else. But again, fairly simple, they're just going through our city. The main interest for us right now, since we're not collecting fees, is to make sure they follow our Public Works requirements and ordinances regarding cuts and rights of way. So we've got quite a bit of language in that agreement about making sure they comply with those requirements.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, I think Slim had his hand up first.
Gene?
Yes.
Does the City of Bowling Green have an exclusive franchise agreement with anyone providing cable or internet?
No. That is a non-exclusive agreement. And by the way, that agreement, we want a month to month and have been probably now for two and a half years. We are still working on trying to reach an agreement with our cable provider, and we've not been able to do that so far. But regardless, even if we did, that also would be non-exclusive. We will always open to competition for people who want to come in and provide cable service.
Thank you.
Dana, you had your question?
Yes. When you mentioned working with Public Works, I know when, I think I was working with the state to move the tele, the poles from 31W, where they're right on the road there, over to Magnolia, so for safety reasons. Because, you know, if you drive down 31W, it can feel pretty claustrophobic with all those poles. They were, moved them, and some of the companies were willing to move their wires over, but there is one company that still hasn't moved their wires. And so even though there's a whole new system on Magnolia, we still have all of our poles up on 31W because this one company won't move them. So is there language in this franchise agreement that they will, you know, do those types of moves if we request it? Are we able to do that, or is that not allowed by federal law?
In this type of agreement, we are allowed to do that, and that franchise agreement does provide that if we have to do a road project and we, and they have to move their equipment, that they will move their equipment at their cost. Thank you.
But, but the current wires that are on there that you're talking about are AT&amp;T, and they precede any local jurisdiction, or they're all federal?
Yeah, I think normally, traditionally, may, if I understand, I think we do pay if either BGMU or AT&amp;T is involved, that we pay to move. The other companies, including the cable company, we've got language. If they have poles and they have to move, they pay to move their own. Our franchise agreement with Atmos, which is a little different, but they're in our right of way as well, they also pay for their own moves as well.
Any other comments or questions? I'll call the role. Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson, yes. The first reading passes unanimously, they'll have a second reading at our next meeting. Municipal Order 2020, number 79, municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application and acceptance of grant funds from the US Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Office of Justice Programs for fiscal year 2020, coronavirus emergency supplement funding, CESF program funds in the amount of $98,376. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin. Mr. Mizel. Can't hear you.
Sorry.
There you go. That we could get this money for coronavirus emergency supplemental funding, so we're applying and in a way, accepting at the same time. It's $98,376 with no local match required. The police department plans on using it for PPE and supplies, biohazard suits, it's all listed here in your memo, anything pertaining to protecting our officers from the coronavirus. Also, it's eligible by hand sanitizers and all kinds of stuff with this money. So, so far, we have been very fortunate that our police and fire, fleets have not been affected very much by coronavirus, so we're very fortunate with that, we want to keep it that way. Both are protecting their people with PPE and following all the guidelines. This will certainly help with our police department with their interactions and protecting themselves from, from the virus. So we are recommending immediate acceptance of this $98,376 to be put into use for fighting the coronavirus and protecting our police officers.
Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the role. Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson, yes, motion passes unanimously. The first reading of ordinance BG 2020, number eight, ordinance relating to budget amendment, ordinance approving amendment number three to the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year 2020. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin. Mr. Mizel.
This is our third budget amendment of the year, we'll probably have one more. We have Katie here with us today to answer any of your questions, but basically, a lot of this is donations and grants that we are adding to the budget so we can appropriate or put into fund balance. And again, Katie is here to answer any questions you may have on this.
Any comments or questions? I'll call the role. Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson, yes. First reading passes unanimously, we'll have a second reading at the next meeting. Next, we have ordinance BG 2020, number 10. Excuse me, number nine, which is a first reading for ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning attractive land containing .124 acre from RM3 townhouse multifamily residential to OPR, which is office professional residential located at zero East 13th Avenue, presently owned by Kevin and Bethany Crossland. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin. This is a unanimous recommendation for those planning and zoning members who came to that meeting to rezone that piece of property. Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the role. Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yeah.
Denning? I got you there. Yes. Nash?
Yes.
Yes.
Wilkerson, yes. Motion passes unanimously. We have a second reading at the next meeting. First reading of ordinance BG 2020, number 10, ordinance closing of public right-of-way, ordinance approving the closure, closing of a portion of Ms. Paul Road right-of-way located 1,965 feet north along Ms. Paul Road from Commonwealth Boulevard, continuing approximately 2,215 feet south to Louisville Road, US Highway 31W. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Perigin. Mr. Mizel?
This is closure of Ms. Paul, and I think it pertains to the area around Crown that they're working on now, and I think everything is in your packet from planning and zoning. If you have any questions, we can discuss.
Any comments or questions? I'll call the role. Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson, yes. Next is municipal order 2020, number 80, municipal order suspending certain city code of ordinances and regulations regarding restaurant operations during the coronavirus COVID-19. Motion by Nash, second by Wilkerson. Slim, I'll drop this over to you.
Thank you, mayor. I want to start by talking about an article that has been cited multiple times by multiple restaurant tour magazines. The article originally appeared in Restaurant Business Magazine and was written by their editor-in-chief, Jonathan Mays, who reported that just 18% of US adults said they feel comfortable eating at restaurants once reopened. And that, but anecdotally, restaurants with patio areas are doing much better early on than in states where they have already reopened, because consumers report that they feel more comfortable dining outside. And small restaurants, big restaurants, you know, smaller restaurants are going to have a harder time complying with the governor's directive of 33% capacity, but even larger restaurants can, depending on how those restaurants are set up. This MO, this municipal order, is intended to assist restaurants in opening to the public while also meeting the governor's directives by temporarily suspending certain city codes and regulations to allow for outdoor seating, meaning that restaurants with permission, after submitting, basically, an application to city staff that will be reviewed, if restaurants want to expand onto public property, if they want to expand on the city sidewalks, if they want to erect tents, in order to comply with the 33% maximum occupancy by moving people outside and keeping people safe through social distancing, that the city's not going to object to those, provided that they have a good plan in doing so. In addition, any fees that would have been associated with the application to do some of those things would be waived. It's really designed, as we reopen, to try to assist businesses, specifically, in this case, restaurants, in being able to provide their services and their products safely to the consumers. This is, this is temporary, this is not forever. Many of the things that we're suspending on a temporary basis have a good reason to be there in the long term, but not necessarily in the short term, as people attempt to both reopen and consumers start to feel safe in going out to eat at restaurants. Nothing further at this time.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Joe?
Mayor, if I could, I'd love to take a few minutes of today's time to express my condolences and deep sorrow to Mrs. Oldham, Mrs. Herbert Oldham, from Mr. Herbert Oldham passing away last week. Mr. Oldham was, was one of my mentors. He took me under his wings at an early age and told me what was right and what was wrong. He was my assistant football coach, assistant basketball coach, and as I said, a father figure to me. I'm going to miss him, certainly his family, a bunch of good folks, retired school teacher here in the Bowling Green Public Schools, and he is one of my teachers as well as my coach. And yes, I got good grades in his class, Slim, they were Bs. But I just want to thank him and Mrs. Oldham, the girls, and the rest of the family. They know how I feel, because I've already talked with Mrs. Oldham, and thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Sue, do you have a question?
I do. Joe, sorry for your loss, and it's a big loss to the Purple Nation as well, which we're a part of, so sorry. I'm going to go back to the municipal order that Slim has put forward, and I want to say thank you, because I've been saying all along, I don't know why a restaurant with outdoor seating can't be open serving people on their outdoor patio. It seems to me that you're outdoors, you can separate yourself and, you know, kind of, kind of move ahead with business. And I'll say that I've had to, I've been in Florida for the last week and a half attending to my elderly mother, and their restaurants are open, and they have, most restaurants in Florida have outdoor seating, so there's a lot of commerce going on, even though they only have 25% capacity indoors, there's a lot going on outdoors. So I think that that's wonderful and absolutely should happen. My question is, is does this pertain to being able to set up temporary outdoor seating in some parts of parking lots? Sort of like when you see Bruising Tunes and Mellow Mushroom goes out and puts a big tent up in the back parking lot, puts picnic tables out and is able to serve lots of people, even as, you know, being able to be socially separated? Is this municipal order going to allow for expansion into parking lot areas that are safely kind of cordoned off?
Absolutely. That, that was, I don't know if that was the number one intent, but it was one of the top three intents that I had with the ordinance. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Municipal order, municipal order.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's.
Commissioner, if you look at the first full paragraph on the second page, it says, restaurants may provide services in its parking lot and on shared parking lots, and even adjacent private property if authorized by the owners of the shared lots or the adjacent property. So I think the big part of this is that allow these restaurants to move out into the parking lots as well.
Right. Thanks, Dana. What I really wanted was for the public to understand, I don't know why it's getting feedback, but I wanted the public to understand that that's, they're going to see some restaurants, and they're going to, and it's okay that they're seeing tables and things like that. I just hope that they do that with extreme caution and safety, as cars will be kind of encroaching on, you know, closer to diners, and it may not be the barrier setup that they have with patios and other things. So I would just, you know, say that we just need to be very mindful of the safety of moving out into parking lots. And, you know, a lot of restaurants don't have set up outdoor seating. I would have been in trouble at Cambridge Market when I was the owner of that restaurant on Fairview, but knowing that I could cordon off, you know, some of my parking spots would have gave me some relief. So it's great, and it's a great way to move forward. Thank you.
Slim?
Part of the approval process is to ensure that, is to ensure to the best we can, safety, to make sure that we don't have cars coming that close to patrons, although they are going to become closer. And something that I always want to make sure that we, we make sure is in there is that anything that a restaurant wants to do must comply with the Americans with Disabilities Nothing further.
All right, thank you, I appreciate you putting this forward. Understand how important it is for restaurants to reopen, how most of our businesses need to reopen, glad we're able to help participate, at least in this temporary manner, part of what you said and what Sue said, that, you know, this is temporary, there's reasons for the regulations that they have, and, you know, we wouldn't do anything, you know, from a policy or permanent standpoint at the special meeting issues where we don't have public attending. So again, this expires 30 days after the emergency expires, so thank you for putting this forward. Are there any other questions, comments? I'll call the role. Perigin?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Yes.